Follow the items in order. Board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abutters, and affected parties and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You're welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Derek Horn at Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are agreed by decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within thirty days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And with that, I'd like the board to introduce themselves, starting with...
Derek Horn staff. Ed Loopy member.
Gail O'Bruck.
Kathy Hooton.
Joanne Duffy.
Lynn Stewart alternate.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We just have a couple of things on the agenda for this evening. The first is the approval of the minutes from the February first, two thousand eleven meeting. We had them available on the website. Did anyone have any comments or motions for the minutes from February first?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any comments? I had no issues. Motion's on the table to approve the minutes of February first. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed or abstained?
Abstained.
Abstaining? Okay. Alright, so four zero one. Alright, with that, we're gonna go into our first item on the, uh, public hearings this evening, which is, uh, rehearing, which was granted on the seventh of December of two thousand ten. The Ga- uh, excuse me. The Goffstown Harvest Christian Church applicant is seeking a variance to allow the construction of a church in an industrial district. The variance is required because section three dot ten dot B dot seven of the zoning ordinance prohibits churches in the industrial district. The applicant is also seeking a variance to allow a steeple that will exceed the maximum allowable height of forty-five feet provided by section four point three of the zoning ordinance. The proposed steeple will measure sixty-three feet eight inches height high to the peak of the steeple and have a building height of fifty-nine feet, which is the mean height between the roof ridge and peak as defined by the zoning ordinance. Similar variances were requested and conditionally approved June third of two thousand eight, but became null and void on June third, two thousand ten, because active and substantial development did not occur in accordance with section fifteen point three point one point three of the zoning ordinance. Property is located on Cody Lane and Daniel Plummer Road, which is map three, lot thirty-two A, in an industrial district. Now, the Greek, uh, ZBA granted a rehearing on this application at the December seventh, two thousand ten meeting, held a public hearings on the, uh, fourth of January, two thousand eleven, and the first of February, two thousand eleven, and continued the public hearing to today, the first of March, two thousand eleven. The ZB- ZBA had voted three to two at the eleven, uh, at the third of November, twenty ten meeting, to find the application did not have regional impact. And as is stated, uh, we are, the public hearing is still open.
I'm second down.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. So with that, uh, Lynn being the alternate this evening, would you, uh, we asked that you be a voting participant on this application?
Certainly.
So, did the board have any questions? Answers, issues that needed to be clarified during the public hearing?
Um, I think the only thing that I would like to have on the record is your explanation that you submitted via letter about the steeple.
Attorney Tierney, would you please come forward?
Thank you. I submitted a letter, um, dated February eighth, two thousand eleven, in response to the board's question regarding whether there will be a cross on the top of the steeple. Um, there will indeed be a cross on the top of the steeple. Uh, the cross is going to be three feet, three inches high from the bottom of the cross to the top of the cross, and that will be on top of the steeple height at sixty-three feet eight inches. So if you take that three feet, uh, three inches and add it to the sixty-three feet eight inches, um, the total height of the top of the cross will be sixty-six feet eleven inches. Um, as y'all know, under the, um, uh, looks like section four point three of the Goffstown zoning ordinance, building height is determined by the vertical height from the sidewalk, um, to the, uh, mean height between the eaves and the, um, ridges on the roof. Therefore, the height of the cross on top of the steeple, um, does not count to the height of the building, um, just as the height of a chimney or an antenna on top of the roof doesn't count, um, toward the height. But there will be a cross of approximately three feet, uh, three inches on top of the steeple.
Okay. Good. Anyone else have any questions? Attorney Tierney, did you have any last things that we may not have heard, or anything pop to your mind?
I know it's been a long time, um, that we've been here, and just to summarize, we're here asking for the same variances that we had requested back in two thousand eight. Um, we feel that they should be granted based on the same, um, reasons that they were granted back in two thousand eight. Uh, but if they are not granted, there's also the opportunity, uh, for the board to grant an exemption under Ralupa. And there's three different, uh, reasons why the board may want to grant an exemption under Ralupa. Uh, the first is that the board could find that because the ordinance applies to religious assemblies, um, differently than it applies to non-religious assemblies such as gyms, hotels, motels, municipal buildings, et cetera, um, that that's going to be a violation of the equal terms provision of Ralupa, um, granting this board, uh, the authority to give the church an exemption. Secondly, um, the board could find, um, that the Goffstown zoning ordinance in its totality creates an unreasonable limitation on churches in excess of five thousand square feet, where the only location where churches are permitted, um, as of right is in the residential district, but there's dimensional limitation of five thousand square feet. Therefore, any church larger than that needs to obtain either a variance or some other discretionary permit. Um, and the board could also grant a ex- um, an exemption under Ralupa for that reason. Independently, the board could also grant a Ralupa exemption if the board finds that the two-year time limit on variances, um, as applied to Goffstown Harvest Christian Church, which as you all know had up- obtained a special exception, um, and then the zoning ordinance was changed, it had then come back, it had obtained, uh, variances in June two thousand eight, it had then gone to the planning board and obtained its site plan approval. Given the totality of the circumstances, um, the board could grant an exemption under Ralupa, uh, from the two-year time limit on variances. And just to be clear, um, we're not saying that the requirement that a church, um, uh, obtain a variance in order to be located in an industrial district may per se result in a substantial burden, but the two-year lo- um, time limitation in this particular case, um, results in a substantial burden. Uh, so there's four different ways in which the board, um, could grant the relief that we're requesting, um, which is to be put in the same position that we were in, um, as of June second, two thousand ten. Should the board, uh, not wish to put us back in the same position that we're in on June second, two thousand ten, I would respectfully, um, request that the, um, board determine what, um, interest the town of Goffstown has in making the church, um, apply for an extension in June as opposed to October when the application was actually filed. And as always, I'm here for any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Tierney. Anyone have any last questions?
I do have a question. Where, where does it say in our ordinances, um, that you are restricted to five thousand square feet for a church?
The five thousand square foot limitation applies just in the residential district. The residential district is the only district where churches are allowed as of right without obtaining either a variance, a conditional use permit, or a special exception.
However, if a variance was granted, um, and we would respect it based upon, um, one of the RSAs in here that says fourteen six point four under statutes of uses of dimensions established by variance, um, that it would be considered a, an allowable, not to be, and the use of dimensions of a lot of structure would not be considered non-conforming, and if you look under industrial, I would assume that, that the zoning reg- regulations under four point three state that, um, the maximum non-residential building footprint should be fifty thousand. So I would tend to say that, that if a variance was granted to you, or perhaps wasn't, I would, I would assume that the non-residential building footprint would be fifty thousand, not five thousand.
Could I ask you what section you're pointing to versus fifty thousand?
I'm pointing to, um, I'm, uh, first I pointed to four point six point four, um, because I was looking at it from a possibility of a non-conforming structure, or non-conforming use in a, in an industrial district. And then we got to knowing that where are the use of the dimensions of a lot of structure not otherwise allowed under the provisions of this ordinance have been established by the granting of a variance by the zoning board of adjustment pursuant to section fourteen point three. Decisions by the board of adjustment said use of dimensions of a lot of structure shall not be considered to be non-conformities under the provision of this section. Any modification or use of dimensions established by a variance will require a new application for a variance to be submitted to the ZBA for consideration, and I would say that under that, then the allowable, um, the, the square footage of the building footprint would be fifty thousand, not five.
And Kathy, I think you meant fourteen point six point four versus four point six.
Maybe. This is an older book. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is an older book. I don't have my new one.
Thank you, 'cause I just couldn't find the four, four point six point.
But you read from fourteen point six point four.
Did I, is that what I read?
Yeah, that's what you read.
Fourteen point six point four?
Correct.
Yes.
So it's basically you're stating that if it's been given a variance, then there's, you apply.
Well, I, I, when we're looking at it as far as the Ralupa issue is concerned, I, I just wanted to address that because I do feel that, that, um, the building footprint of fifty thousand is, is what is allowed in the industrial district with a variance.
I would agree that an applicant could come to this board and seek a variance from the five thousand square foot, uh, limitation in the residential district if one wanted to build a church in the residential district, but I don't believe that, um, a church has any, um, degree of certainty that this board would grant a variance, um, to exceed that five thousand square feet anymore than the church could have any certainty that this board would grant a variance to have a church used in the industrial district. I think that a church used in the industrial district would likely have, um, less of a negative impact, um, on its neighbors, given the size and the type of traffic impact in the industrial district as opposed to, um, some of the residential districts in Pinnardville.
Okay.
Does the five thousand square feet also apply to the agricultural district as well?
Um, I'm...
I'm looking at the table of uses here, and it seems it's a permitted by right application in the agricultural district.
Yes, table four point three also applies a five thousand square foot limitation in the agricultural district.
And the other table that you referenced in there, Lynn, was, uh...
Would be, I'm looking at page eleven of...
Here we go, three dot...
Uh, B, educational, institutional...
Three dot eleven point D. Uh, I'm sorry. Three dot eleven point...
Let me get the...
On page eleven.
Three dot eleven, B...
B, yeah.
Seven.
Correct. And you're showing on that table on page eleven that it's by, uh, a principle.
It's a permitted...
It's a right.
Permitted by right use in the agricultural.
Similar to R one and R two districts.
Right, and there's a five thousand square foot limitation in agricultural as well. And similarly, I think a, um, large church would probably have more negative impact in agricultural district in Goffstown than in the industrial district in Goffstown.
Okay. Any last questions? Ed? Yeah? Debbie?
No. I'm outside.
Lynn? Alright, Attorney, Attorney, thank you.
Thank you.
Any last comments for the public? Okay.
Hi.
Hi, Joanne.
Joanne Duffy, Addison Road. I'm not against a church in this area. I'm just concerned that the church is too large for the lot that it's proposed for, as well as, I'm still not a hundred percent clear on whether the outdoor activities such as the amphitheater have been removed or not. I, I just wanna get that straightened out. If the board were to grant the variance, that, that stipulation be made clear that that would not be part of it if it's not shown on that plan. And there is, or there could be a potential impact to the agricultural land, which is right across the road. So I'm concerned with noise and, and that sort of activity, as well as blasting, but I know, you know, this board doesn't have anything to do with that. But those are my concerns. I'm not saying that it wouldn't fit in, I'm just saying that it seems overly large and overly tall, um, for this area. It, it will be more than likely the tallest building there, and, um, I just think it, that the board needs to look at whether it fits in with, with the neighborhood, and that's my, my biggest concern.
Okay. Are you, you're familiar with the, uh, the, uh, vote and the finding back in two thousand eight when they gave approval to allow the church? That their condition was that there are no, there are to be no outside services at this location?
Yeah, and I just wanna make sure that it, that follows through, because, because I was told last time that this is a new application.
Correct.
So I just wanna reiterate that, that's all.
And the, in this case, the applicant has asked for, if they could get what they had before, which is, well, I had asked them this, if they could get this approval with these conditions, would they be satisfied? And they indicated that they would be.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, anything else?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay. Any reason to keep the public hearing open? I don't either. With that, we're going to close the public hearing, and since we have no other applications, a perfect time to deliberate and, and make decisions.
I have a motion.
Okay, Gail with a motion?
I pulled together.
Okay.
I came prepared.
Alright, great.
Okay. I, I wanna preface my motion first, though.
You can say what you wish.
Thank you. Ralupa doesn't include as a substantial hardship that the town should have to maintain your own approval, approvals, monitor the dates, and overlook the two-year requirement for active and substantial development, and the requirement for an extension should that not be met. According to our loopers, I have read and discussed it, an applicant still must follow the requirements of the town. They must give to Caesar what is Caesar's. I want to admit that I was really wound up at the allegations made of this board and the argument that went along with it. You had the approvals once and only had to come back and do the same thing, but our hands are tied when your representative focuses on Ralupa rather than the variance requirement and says that there is no hardship. That's one of the requirements for a variance, and without it being met, we had to deny, regardless of our heart and sympathies for your situation. Had you come in and said and done what was done at the rehearing, it would have been much better. We are a reasonable board, and that said, I make a motion to approve the variance for the following reasons. Public interest in the spirit, spirit of the ordinance is met. When the ordinance was changed to prohibit churches from the industrial zone, it did not include Goffstown Harvest Christian Church because it already had a sp- special exception that it had, had requested. At the time the ordinance change was considered and put on the ballot, it was expected that this church would be built at this location. So the ordinance change was really for other churches that might come in at some point in the future. The hardship has been met. The applicant with help demonstrated that the land is unique from others in the area with its slopes and wetlands on which they stated they would not build. There's no diminu- dim- there's no, uh... No reduction in value of the surrounding property.
You better change your word in there.
Yeah, I know. Uh, a realtor, um, who was, um, with the church group expressed the, the opinion that there was, uh, expressed that specific opinion, and there was nothing said to refute it. And substantial justice would be done by permitting and approving this variance. It's too far down the road to anticipate sewer hookups, and the merger of the abutting parcels can't be forced for an industrial use and that, that are owned by different owners. I do wanna remind the applicant that the representations made to the ZBA are consideration- are, are considered conditions of the approval, and if you stray from those, you may be required to return to the ZBA to have your variance reconsidered. So, and as I say this, I'm thinking especially to the statement that you wouldn't build on the slopes of the wellland areas, but it's not just that, it's all the statements that you made. I guess, and that would also include the outside activities. So, that is my motion.
Okay. So let me clarify, so are you, uh, making a motion for both variance requests to approve the, uh, the location of a church in industrial area and the approval of the construction of the steeple?
Yes.
In your motion?
Yes.
Are you including the conditions that were placed on the applicant in the approval that were done in two thousand eight?
Yes.
Where the, the condition of the...
Yes.
Church was the no outdoor services?
Yes. Everything to, basically to put them back where they were.
Okay.
Pre all of this mess.
And just to make sure everybody else understands the conditions, and let me read from it, just to make sure everybody understands what that is. So, in two thousand eight, the board approved on a three to two vote to approve the church in the industrial district with the condition that there are to be no outside services at this location. The board approved three to two to conditionally approve the height variance to allow the steeple as proposed, with the condition the steeple is to be used solely as an architectural element and cannot have communication abilities, for example, but not limited to comm- to telecommution, telecommunication facilities. So that is that, that is part of your motion?
What did you say? It's not limited to, or it is one?
So... The steeple is to be used solely as an architecture element and cannot have communication abilities.
Okay.
For example, but not limited to telecommunications specifically. So it's basically just architecture?
Right.
No loudspeakers?
No doors.
Lights from cell towers?
Nothing in the bell ring.
Right.
Yes. Okay. Yes. That would be it.
Sorry. Okay, there's a motion. Any seconds or comments?
How do you feel that the granting of the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance?
Because the ordinance, although it says no, um, churches in an industrial area, that's, that ordinance was created after this church was approved. So when that church was created, they expected, I mean, when that ordinance was created, this church was expected to have been built. So in my mind, it was intended for future churches that might come in and take up the rest of the industrial parcels.
And you're saying when the town voted to approve, they understood, or, or could have understood that the town had already approved the, the church on this property?
Right.
And were looking beyond this property?
Cause they had alr- they had already gone through this special exception and had everything, ha- and had had that approved, and I, I understand that they had to come back for the variance because of the change, but, um, it was, I, I just believe that it was anticipated that they came back, that they had the approval and it was for future churches.
Okay.
And at that time when, when, um... At the time that, from the time that that was granted to the time that it lapsed, the state laws and, and requirements for ver- uh, for a variance changed?
Between which two periods of time?
Well, the, the time from which the variance was granted originally...
Two thousand eight?
Two thousand and eight. The, um, requirements for a variance were changed, um, at a state level. When was that?
I believe that was... It was effect, it was effective January first, two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten.
Okay.
So the requirements of a variance based upon the state RSAs, um, and what we need to consider for s- for the variance requirements from the state level did change, um, which gives us these five, um, areas to be considered, of which two of them, Gail has specifically addressed.
I actually addressed more than two. Public interest in spirit of the ordinance because they're considered pretty much the same hardship.
What, could you repeat that statement again? It was...
Public interest in spirit of the ordinance because they're pretty much the same. They were kind of gathered into one hardship, property values, substantial justice. If I missed?
I know you got them all.
Okay.
So despite the change, she's not just saying that the, the zoning, uh, the zoning board of adjustment in two thousand eight, I affirm it. She's, she, basically you re-applied the criteria as it is written today.
Right.
Reconsidered it based on the criteria as today.
Yep.
Any comments, questions?
So the granting of the variance, the substantial justice is done because, what did you state there?
Because, um... The, the, um, zoning ordinance change, when it was changed, this church, just before it was changed, this church had the special exception, right?
Yes.
And because this church came in and was building in a zoning, in the industrial zone, that's kind of what triggered the planning board, I believe, to want to protect the rest of the industrial land. They, because they already had their special exception here, the planning board knew that, or presumed that it, this church was a moot point and was basically protecting the rest of the industrial parcels, and they weren't targeting this parcel because this church was already approved as they saw it when they first, um, started addressing it. So it was not really aimed at this church, so I think substantial justice is, is done.
So do you feel in the future that if a new application came in for another church to be developed in an industrially zoned area, that you would be able to possibly, based upon, uh, an assumption, deny it because the ordinance is such now after the vote of two thousand and eight? Because that's what the public interest wants?
Would it be if, if they didn't meet the criteria, yes.
Lynn? Ed? Any comments?
I...
Was there any verbiage on the lighting in that variance? I, I didn't hear any, so I just wanna make sure as far as lighting of the steeple.
There was discussion in the, in the, um, presentation of the lighting, um, on whether there was gonna be internal lighting or externally lit.
Right.
Architectural feature. There wasn't anything in the previous, uh, approval?
As far as restrictions?
Right. The applicant, I believe, stated that, you recall in the, the minutes, and that the applicant stated that they would not be internally lit, that if it was lit, it'd be externally lit, the steeple?
Yes, yes, it would, I believe they would have some kind of like uplight?
Right.
Is that what they're called? I don't know, but it wouldn't, it didn't sound like it was invasive.
Right. Okay. That's something that... Does the planning board get involved in that type of thing?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The planning board probably would.
Okay. Lynn?
I think I'm going to second Gail's motion for, to move the discussion along. I agree with Gail's logic on pretty much all the points. The big, in researching and reading on this, because I haven't been involved in the proceeding too much, one of my considerations was, I believe it was what Gail started out with, when you... I believe it was what Gail started out with, when you miss the deadline, it's not the town's responsibility to tick your calendar and say you've got two years, and that's a general applicability thing to all preferences, when it came, when they came in here in October or November, it was basically a new proceeding under a zoning law that had changed subsequently, and whether or not the, that change in the zoning law was aimed at this particular church, it was a new proceeding that had to be considered under the new law. I do agree with Gail, I think it's substantial justice, they would have been, had they come in in May, in, on June second, got this done, we wouldn't have had the subsequent issues and the bringing federal law into the thing, I think it would have been at that point a simple matter of extending something that was already in place. You know, I agree with Gail's motion and, you know, I'll second it to move the discussion along.
Okay. Yeah, I, I feel it's due to the history. I don't necessarily like the idea that we're giving up industrial land in the town because we've got very little of it as it is. However, as I don't think the change in the zoning law was aimed at this particular church, and the fact that they had already gotten approval before this all went through, in a, in a sense, it's grandfathering them, but as I have not seen any evidence that the town is going to go forth and and cultivate this industrial land as far as sewers or, or locking up parcels or connecting parcels or joining parcels or, or anything else, I I feel that, that this probably should be granted.
Okay.
I, I also don't feel that Arlopa plays as big a role in this as, as everybody thinks it does. Arlopa does, and I've read it quite extensively, Arlopa does grant the town, you know, available remedies to, to get out, you know, and, and not be backed into a corner here. But in this case, where there really is no evidence that the town's going to do anything with this particular parcel, yeah, I think, I think it, it should probably go. All right.
My, my motion really had nothing to do with Arlopa.
Yeah.
With the Arlopa argument.
No, and, and I, and I read into that, it, it really doesn't, and, and I, I just don't think that, that, you know, the argument that Arlopa is a, is an end-all, get-all, you know, for the churches for this is not necessarily true. I think it, it, there are a couple of paragraphs in it that I read that obviously give the town some leeway here as to what decisions can be made with this. But I don't see any evidence, and I haven't seen any evidence in testimony, that the town has got plans in the near future for that lot. They already own it, they already have been granted this once before. So, again, I think it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, but, but
As every application is.
As every application is, you're right, as every application is, and whereas the town, you know, doesn't have any plans for this, but the church obviously does, and hopefully they're going to get underway here. I also don't feel that, you know, it, it may be, in what I've read here, all the verbiage says it, it does give the town permission, if they so decide to grant these different things. It doesn't say we have to, so I think that the two-year limit should stand.
I, I fully believe it should.
And that's in the, and that's in, I believe that's in your motion.
Yes, it is. They are, I believe that they're responding to their own timeframes and, and everything else, just like any other applicant is. The town has far too many
Exactly.
details of other things to tend to rather than watching one applicant's calendar.
Right, right, I think it's a responsibility of the applicant. And with that?
I'm waiting for you.
Oh. Well, I came armed with a bunch of notes myself, and, and I'm just going to say that I'm glad we actually reheard it, only for the fact that I aired, airing of grievances, right, this is a Festivus event, and but we got to hear an application that was probably more complete, as Gail spoke to. And they brought forth the information from the prior hearings in two thousand six and two thousand eight in the discussion, and I talked to a lot of, really about this property, and, you know, I was even schooled a little bit in how to approach hardship criteria, you know, and that this piece of property is unique in multiple ways, you know, from all over things, from size, ability to house, industrial capacity, what's been on it, who's been owning it, what have they been trying to do, what does the property look like? You know, how has it been zoned? You know, what's the status of the water and sewer getting to it? So, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, where does it locate it in the industrial zone or compared to other things in the neighborhood? So there's a lot of things that, that go to speak to this piece of property, which Gail spoke to in her hardship criteria, that this, this property is unique in its setting. And that, you know, Gail didn't even really speak to, you know, what could have been a, a strong case, but it doesn't have to be, is the fact that this faced, doesn't have to be on a, a standing on its own, and that this owner, prior to them owning it, got a special exemption for the land use and a variance for the steeple, and then a variance for the land use and the steeple in two thousand eight, so that actually the steeple's received variances twice already. And the property use itself was, was, received a special exception to the variance. And essentially the same use, essentially the same conditions of the economy, the same intents by the town, same, just a lot of same-sames. And that there was no substantive facts had changed between, between then and now. I mean, there had been some changes at the, the state level and how you can treat property for how long, you know, the planning board has looked at it and they get approval and, you know, for the uses, but there's been a lot of same's to it, and there wasn't, the only thing that had changed was maybe the composite of the board and the fact that the two years had expired. Those were the things that had changed. And when you look at those things, a reasonable board would look at it and say, yep, they screwed up, they should have come to us and extended this two-year as the zoning ordinance asked, but we're reasonable people and we make reasonable decisions for or against. And we put reasons on the paper, in this case, Gail chose to put conditions on both variances that I support. And with that, I think, I, I would, I'm ready to vote on this.
Why does it one thing to say?
You bet.
When we voted in two thousand and eight, I was one of the two people that voted against issuing the variance. And one of the main reasons that I will state that I was against it at that time was because we did have a letter from the planning board, and I'm reading from the minutes of June third, two thousand eight, that on April twenty-fifth, two thousand eight, the planning board stated that the use variance would be contrary to the public interest because it is not an appropriate location relative to the economic development goals of the adopted master plan. And I firmly believe that. I firmly believe that this is not a parcel that permits. I have to find the terminology of it, hold on a second. Nonprofit community centers and places of gathering is such as what is, one could compare this church to a nonprofit community center. I also believe that our industrial district has stated the purpose is to be established to provide for a layer of scale development of manufacturing, construction, research and development, wholesaling, warehousing, distribution, and similar cases. I don't believe that this is in the spirit of the ordinance. I do not believe that, that which the industrial district was formulated for or created was and has been detailed in our zoning ordinances since the beginning of our zoning ordinances. I feel honestly that when the ordinances were changed and they allowed churches and synagogues, as it was stated in that ordinance, to be allowed in industrial zone districts with a special exception, that they went, that that in fact was a conflict in our zoning ordinances because they never should have voted that to be allowed. I think when this town voted in two thousand and eight to return back to what they felt that places of worship and gathering such as this were more and returned to exactly what the spirit of this town ordinance was for industrial districts. I also feel very strongly that they were granted the special exception in two thousand and eight, I believe.
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six, whatever the time, when, when they were granted the special exception, it was on the granting of the special exception that the, the church decided to purchase the property, and that was prior to the site plan approval. So at that point, there was a gamble on the table, they, they did not know whether or not they were going to get the site plan approval, but they went forward with the, the purchase of the property. They were then, went forward to the planning board, back and forth with the variance issues that we, we had. They went through different attorneys. Somewhere's in, in the timeframe of going from the attorney that handled the variance to now attorney tyranny, something fell down through the cracks, which they were responsible for. And they were responsible for maintaining good records and good record-keeping so that none of that which they were granted could be adversely affected. Because if that so happened, they would now be in front of a zoning board that had new state laws of what variance are required, as well as they had new zoning ordinances as to what the town of Goffstown and the public interest wanted. I voted against it before, I felt very strongly in voting against it before because I feel, feel very strongly for the town of Goffstown, that we need our prime industrially zoned areas. Whether or not has been developed before this time is, is not necessarily, and there could be many reasons why it has not been developed before this time. We have talked about what the cost of the land could have been, that could have been an adverse reason why nobody purchased it before. There are many other reasons, but once again, this is industrially zoned property, if it is, wasn't developed yesterday, it doesn't mean it's not going to be developed tomorrow. When you discuss the issues of the sewer and the water, there is nothing that I can see that tells us they need to have sewer and water. However, they do have water. They have four right-ofways across this property, one being specific down Cody Avenue, which is where the water comes from, and they have the right-ofway to have vehicles go down Cody Avenue and the right-ofway for them to have any utilities that need to go to this particular property. As far as the sewer issue, which has been brought up, and that's why I'm addressing it, they have onsite sewer, and there's nothing that says that they, they cannot have onsite sewer, so whether or not sewer or water, if the, if the interpretation I'm getting is that because of the lack of sewer and lack of water is a reason why this property hasn't been developed as an industrial development complex, I would have to say I don't agree with that statement because that is not the only contingent factor on the development of this particular parcel. Something can be developed there for industry, it can be developed without sewer, it could be developed without water, water is there, which obviously would allow a structure such as a church to be developed there if that was the permitted in our zoning ordinances. And because of the change in the state laws and the new requirements, and because of the change in the zoning ordinances, and because of their lack of attentiveness to the importance, the absolute importance of paying attention to when's variances expire, when site plan approvals expire, I feel that, that I will not give them the benefit of the doubt of being that ignorant. And I do not feel that substantial justice is, is being done here to the town and to the taxpayers and to the town of Goffstown.
Okay. Any final comments? We have a motion on the table.
I just have a question, you mentioned the letter from the planning board to the ZBA when the original variances were granted in two thousand eight. Subsequently, the planning board approved a site plan after that meeting and then gave them permission to build.
They were, I understand that, but they're commenting on the zoning.
Look back on their own letter.
Not, not, no, I, I, and I think that's what we, I, well.
Yeah.
I think you
They said they didn't want it, and then they went ahead and approved it.
Well, I think it's similar to when we have our discussions at about zoning issues, that we have to be very clear and cut and not get involved into the site plan approval. A site plan approval, you can't deny a site plan approval because you didn't agree with the zoning. You have to legitimately look at the piece of, even if, if the, even if the planning board didn't agree with the zoning board's approval, that they should grant zoning of a church or a place of assembly in a, in an industrial zone, once we send it to them, they can only look at the site plan rules and regulations. And if they qualify meeting all those site plan rules and regulations of having sewer, of having drainage, of having lighting, of having all the particulars of a site plan, they can't deny it because they didn't, they didn't agree with the zoning. We, we, we put the ball into their park. And they were just saying to us from the get-go, they don't believe that it should have been zoned because it was not, should have been allowed because it was not in the the master plan.
And Derek, does the planning board provide a comment in two thousand eight because we asked them in accordance with the zoning ordinance that that type of an application went to the planning board for comment, correct?
Yes.
And it's for comment?
Right.
So, and, and I think since then, in the last few months, when we're talking about just planning board zoning type things, that they've out, they've kind of have a reluctance in what type of comment to provide. Because of these exact discussions, they don't want to provide undue influence to what they say. It, it's very important to understand the spirit of the ordinance and the public interest, you know, and who best to ask than the planning board who helped develop most of the zoning ordinances? So, we shouldn't be hesitant to ask the, the planning board for their comment when, why does this ordinance exist? They have the history in most cases. All right, any last, Lynn?
Just one thing, well, in listening to what Kathy had to say, Well, in listening to what Kathy had to say, while the long-term economic development of the town is a worthy master plan goal, you know, I look at a lot of the land along Route one fourteen there that has been zoned industrial, been, if you look at it, probably ripe for development if it was handled the right way for the entire twenty years that I've lived in the town. Uh, and I just don't see with this, without an active plan, without something active going along, I think you had hit it correctly before, there's, I can't see where this rises to a level of concern that we should deny justice to this applicant. Yeah, it could get developed tomorrow. It could also be another twenty years that that same property will lay around undeveloped for a variety of market and other reasons. So, you know, I, I, once again, I'm, I'm in favor of approving the request.
And I, I'm always going to say as the chair of this board, that every application that comes before us, whether it smells or looks similar to another one, it always has unique circumstances. And so, hopefully, we've addressed those here and why the applicant came before us. It's for the sheer fact that they couldn't build a church in the industrial zone is the reason it came before us. So, um, we had to hear that. What was the, what was the process in place? And we have the zoning ordinance and the five criteria to walk through, and we did that. So, I appreciate everybody's patience in doing that. We're not quite done yet on it, but, um, it, it's a few months in, in the making. So, without any further ado, we have a motion on the table and a second to approve both variances with the conditions, uh, as applied. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And no abstentions. So, four, one, zero. Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for that. And with that, Derek, unless you had any last items to add?
I do have, uh, one piece of correspondence to distribute, um, but it is from Attorney Mullen and it is confidential, so I ask that, uh,
Okay. So, we can take it home with us and everything, but-
You can, you can take, but please do not-
It's not public, public information.
Go ahead, it's over.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any?
He invited us to what? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
As we, record should note that Joanne is back on the, on the board. Lynn, thank you for participating in that application. Unless anyone had any comments? The next, uh, ZBA is, what's it?
It is for April fifth.
Okay. No conflicts, where else should we go? Voting next week, right? Town vote?
Tuesday night.
All right. Any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconds? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, none? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.